Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
It helps if I unmute. Yes, I can hear you. Did you hear me, Andrew?
Yes, thank you Candy.
Okay.
Meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 4, 2022. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we will have the roll call.
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Present.
Commissioner Machieski.
Present.
Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Each person gets three minutes. We have a little light on the podium. And green says you have plenty of time. Yellow says it's almost time to finish. And red means please, please finish so that other people can have their turn. Please step forward and give everybody plenty of space. We can all take our turns. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Hello. My name is Teacher Barton, and my current representative is C.M. Morgan. I'm a taxpaying property owner, native son of Washtenaw County. I'm an Eagle Scout, retired Peace Corps volunteer, former Red Cross instructor for EMT and first aid responders, a former big in the Big Brothers Big Sisters program, an active member in wildlife rescue, a youth mentor, and a volunteer for various other community and nonprofit organizations. None of that matters when trying to get help or even a response from a public representative of Washtenaw County. Over 10 months ago, I requested the release of the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department's policies and procedures with reasonable exceptions for publicly accessible viewing. All but the 17 policies on the county website are deemed classified. I FOIA requested when those policies were posted on the county website. That resulted in the county stating there are no records in this digital. There are no records for when something has been posted on a government website is a blatant lie or gross incompetence by the county. We live in the 21st century, and these outdated excuses are no longer even feasible or legitimate, yet they are still being given out as valid reasons for lack of transparency. Through the limited communications with representatives of the county, it was confirmed the Washtenaw sheriff himself has final say on the release of Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department's. The only communication I was able to establish with the sheriff was a short phone conversation where he directly stated he will not discuss this topic with me. I'm not allowed to call back, and he then disconnected because of the call. Cable, the civilian oversight committee for law enforcement of Washtenaw County, failed to bring up my concerns in their November 2021 meeting, did not transfer over my unaddressed concern to the next meeting, and no longer responds to my request for communication in any capacity. My multiple month-long repeated attempts to establish communication with my county through the representatives on this council, the county administrator, corporate council, various county employees, various members of the sheriff's department, and multiple attempts to speak with the sheriff have not come to any fruition or resolution of this issue. The lack of communication from the various aspects of my county has now required me to address this issue in a public forum as the only viable means of insured communication. Here's my concern. Since the sheriff has final say in denying the release of public documents, why is there no policy or requirement of transparency on the sheriff to justify his personal decisions to deny the release of public documents? I am now asking for the help of this representative body to take actions to have the policies and procedures of the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department be posted on the county website with reasonable exceptions for publicly accessible viewing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Libby Hunter. Live in Ann Arbor. I'd like to speak in support of Teacher Barton, who just was up here, his effort to have the county sheriff's department's policies listed in full on the county website. And bravo to the Michigan State Police, who recently did post nearly all of their policies on the state website. I'd also like to speak in support of a possible effort by all of you, our commissioners, something you might consider for the future, brainstorming and figuring out a way to evaluate our sheriff and all future sheriffs in our county. As of now, this position in our county has no evaluation, as you know. So, and back to the list of policies. It's only democratic to have those policies on the website. In so many ways, it supports democracy, which I don't have to go into with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Greg Zabinski. I'm a township. I just wanted to thank Ramon Patel for 61 years of service for the county and 51 years as the equalization director, as this evening will be his final equalization report. Thank you.
Hi. Before I start to speaking, I want to make sure I hold this to the part. Thank you. And there is an eight there. I will give you number nine in just a second. My name is Monica Ross Williams. I'm a resident of Ypsilanti Township. And I'm coming back to this meeting in regards to something that occurred at this meeting on April 6. That was very disturbing to me to look and see. I'm going to start with the beginning part is that the commissioners started their meeting at about 7:03. At that point in time, public comments proceeded after the Pledge of Allegiance. After that point in time, there were three commissioners that were eating and drinking. Number one, Caroline Sanders, Commissioner Caroline Sanders, was eating and drinking, proceeded to take off her mask at various times to do so. Number two, Justin Hodge was drinking, proceeded to take off his mask to do so. Number three, Katie Scott was eating and drinking and proceeded to take off her mask to do so, which was funny and discerning when Commissioner Jefferson started speaking during his speaking period, when he took off his mask in order to say that he needed to be heard better from before to public, that he was basically said he had a disorderly conduct, which I actually had to look up on the Michigan State Legislature site. I would suggest maybe each of the commissioners have a chance to do that as well. Also, in addition, I pulled up a, and I know this is not the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, but a Garden City, Anavale City Council and Mayor meeting. It's specifically, if you look down on the second page at the bottom, it talks about disorderly conduct at meetings. And I'm not going to read it, but you can read this part, which it goes straight to MCL 750 dot 170, which corresponds with this, with the Michigan Legislature. As far as I'm concerned, and I'm pretty sure most members of the public that attended that meeting, Commissioner Jefferson did not do anything other than speak to the public, which is his right to do as a commissioner. So to have him basically accused of a misdemeanor before this body was unacceptable. It was completely unacceptable, to be completely honest. Last time I checked, the only thing that could have been possibly close to a misdemeanor according to the state law is a person that's jostling or roughly crowding people unnecessarily in a public place. I don't think speaking does that to the public. That's his job as a commissioner. We pay him $27,000 a year to address the public. We also pay all of you $27,000 a year to treat each commissioner with a level of respect. Hopefully, that will be done from this point going forward.
Any other people wishing to make public comment?
Chair, we do have three in the Zoom. Can you get their hands up?
Thank you.
First is Zach Fosler.
Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm just calling in because you have a resolution before you tonight regarding a community violence interruption. I think it's very important. We have, I've been participating in this group that was convened by the mayor of Ypsilanti to help reduce incidents of gun violence in our community, specifically gun violence, really violence of all kinds. But we really need to reduce what we're seeing around gun violence. And within our properties, the housing commission, we're certainly no stranger to it. But I think what's really special about this approach is that, you know, what we're learning is very evidence-based, and what we're learning is that it's not just about law enforcement to fix this problem. And it's certainly not just about community. It really is a combination of the two. And I think that the initiatives within this resolution really address those. And so I just want to express my support on behalf of the Ypsilanti Housing Commission and myself as a Washtenaw County resident. And with that, that's all I got to say to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Harvey Summers.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Summers, and I live in Syo Township in Commissioner District One. The Washtenaw County Criminal Justice Collaborative Council, the CJCC, has canceled its last six meetings and has not met since May 27, 2021, a year ago. The 2020 resolution establishing the CJCC set up quarterly meetings. In its initial January 2021 meeting, the CJCC actually voted to meet every other month. However, in 16 months, the CJCC has met only twice. Its initial January 2021 meeting for 45 minutes, and in May, a year ago, for 37 minutes. So I have to ask the question, is there a record showing that the multiple cancellations were done by CJCC majority vote as required by the establishing resolutions, Article 8, Section A, Clause 2? Next, the May 2021 meeting minutes have never been posted to the CJCC website, which violates the November 2020 resolution. I understand these minutes had never been approved, but the draft minutes themselves shall be made public as per Section G of Article 8, which says proposed minutes shall be available for public inspection, not more than eight business days after each meeting. Now, Ms. Gordon from the CJCC has sent me my own copy, but how can we get the draft minutes available on the CJCC website for the public? And a very minor issue on the CJCC website, the 2022 meetings. This year's meetings are all shown, I'm sorry, five of the six are shown with a 2021 date. It'd be nice to get that corrected. In general, I want to thank the commission for all the amazing work you're doing in so many areas. But I'm disappointed that the logical and even critical role that you apparently designed in your November 2020 resolution, setting up the CJCC, has not been fulfilled. I understand that much important progress is being made to make our county's criminal justice system more equitable. But without the CJCC playing the role you as commissioners envisioned in November 2020, are the developments underway in our county moving forward as effectively as they should be, in as coordinated a fashion as they should be? And without the ability of the public to hear the proceedings of the body that should be bringing that progress together to be reviewed in a single meeting every two months, how can the public know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rosemary Linares.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosemary Linares. And on behalf of my husband and I, Damián Rivera, we would like to thank the county commissioners for the upcoming resolution on tonight's agenda, which is to issue a lot of support for our upcoming meat and poultry processing expansion grant. And we'll be submitting this to the USDA next week. Over the past 18 months, we've had $120,000 in grant funds that has supported a comprehensive feasibility study, business plan, preliminary facility design, and food safety plans to launch a new USDA-inspected multi-species slaughterhouse in southeast Michigan. We live in Syo Township in Washtenaw County, and we intend to launch this new facility within Washtenaw County. Though we've made a lot of progress over the last year and a half, we've been on this journey honestly for eight years. It's been a long journey, and we're driven by our guiding principles and values for the humane and human and animal welfare. So people-centered facility design with practices and culture that support the workers as well as the humane handling and animal welfare commitments that we have. Honesty and transparency, so trusting in collaborative relationships with farmers, distributors, and consumers. Also, our commitment to high-quality products and packaging with unique flavor profiles, customized orders, and appealing packaging that promotes the traceability of products as well as environmental stewardship. We want to honor our natural resources. And so we're committed to investing in regenerative practices and systems to conserve and preserve the environment. We're incredibly passionate about our local food system, and we recognize your passion and support. We are deeply grateful for your support. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
There is one more hand. Lois Allen Richardson.
Welcome.
Good afternoon or good evening to everyone. Yes, thank you for that welcome. I would just like to speak regarding the resolution regarding the violence intervention plan that has been very thoughtfully put together. It was, I believe it was last July that we were at an event, and a young man had just been killed the day before, a couple of days before. And as I was at this event, I saw several people that worked with, from agencies that worked with you. And I know that they were all working as hard as they could, but yet we were still having gun death after gun death. And I just approached them and asked if they would be willing to come together and let's work together rather than working each one in their own silo. And so we began to come together once a week and develop the plan that is before you tonight. I do believe that if we initiate this plan, we will see a drop in gun violence. And I believe that with those that we have working with us, that we might even see a complete ceasing of that. That is my prayer and my heart's desire is that we would see an end to gun violence here in Washtenaw County. I want to thank, excuse me, I want to thank community director for the sheriff's department, Derek Jackson. And, excuse me, I've been suffering, I've been battling a horrific sore throat all day. So if my voice goes, that's the reason. For taking on the job of facilitating this group. We, our group has grown probably from maybe 10 people to now, sometimes we have 24 that are part of our meeting. And we also have been bringing in young people that have, in one way or other, been affected by gun violence. We believe that this plan that is before you tonight will make a tremendous difference here in Washtenaw County. So I'm believing and asking you to, if you've already read it or as you go through it tonight, that certainly you will pass it so that we can begin to bring an end to the gun violence that we see repeatedly here. There was a young man killed today in the city of Ypsilanti around 11:15 because of a gun. So we need to get guns off the street. We need to get our young people in a place where they put guns down and work out their differences in another way. And I believe that this resolution and the parts that are in there will help us do that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration and have a wonderful meeting.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Commissioner. Follow-up to public participation. I just want to say thank you to everybody for speaking tonight. And then we'll move to Commissioner comments. I do have, oh, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This evening, I appreciate my colleague from Ypsilanti Township area, former trustee of Ypsilanti Township, Monica Ross Williams, for bringing the attention of the information that she brought to us and the incident on last meeting. It has been a trying incident that when I think about with others in this meeting, doing the things that were said as far as eating and drinking, and then I'm singled out as taking my mask off for speaking because there was somebody in the audience that has a hearing impairment and has been writing me in emails. And also, some others have wrote me in emails from the county who work in the county, saying it's difficult to hear me speak. And even as I speak now, I've noticed the IT is doing the best they can to raise the volume so that I can be heard. So that is what it's all about. I mean, it's nothing that is a disorderly conduct. And therefore, there is no reason for that to be said of my behavior. If my behavior was appropriate, when it comes to dealing with personal individuals within the community, I'm going to always respect what they need and try my best to give them that. And so therefore, thank you for coming today. I guess the stopping the violence situation has occurred in my district within the last year or so. People within the district who are involved with those who know family members, community members that have been victims of gun violence or have even perpetrated gun violence have been doing their best to make sure that the pathway of those individuals, when the incident has happened, change their direction. Change their direction and make it an effort to become a more productive citizen because the only thing that can really change a person is understanding that person. And so with the grassroots groups that are that are within our communities, Supreme Felons, women and men making change, and there's others also that have been at the at the front line of dealing with these individuals. And have been successful in giving some of these individuals opportunities to change their lives. And so I continually hear of violence as Mayor Richardson said today, there was a shooting today, man, young man died. That is something that we can all get together as as commissioners and find a way to deal with this public health crisis of our children being and our young adults being murdered on a regular basis. And I really appreciate that being brought to us today, the group that put it together. Thank you for doing that. And Mayor Richardson, thank you. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to note in regard to the the mass conversation at the last meeting, there were no allegations of disorderly conduct under the penal code that the behavior that we were discussing was potentially a well, a violation of our board rules that we all voted on. And so there was nothing, nothing criminal about Commissioner Jefferson's behavior in any way, shape or form. The the only thing was that it was a violation of our rules. And so I think we may need to have a discussion about whether eating and drinking in in the meeting is as well. But just, I just wanted to set that to rest that there there were no allegations of any criminal behavior whatsoever at all. So thank you, everybody. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Okay, then we are going to move on to, we have several special resolutions today of honor. The first one is honoring Mr. Jim Dries, and I'm going to pass that over to Commissioner Morgan, who is the liaison to the Department of Public Works, or I'm sorry. The Board of Public Works.
Thank you, Chair. So our Water Resources Commissioner Evan Pratt and I are very happy to present this. Commissioner Scott is the new liaison to Public Works, but I had the pleasure of serving with Jim for some time. And I will say as a personal nature with a long history and friendship here. So I will hand it to Evan first and for some comments.
Yeah, thanks very much. I like to speak with my hands. Jim's been a wonderful person to work with for for many years. Jim has volunteered for thirty six years on the county's Board of Public Works. He has seen a lot and has mentored me in a number of ways that I greatly appreciate. As many of you know, Jim was also an employee of the clerk's office for about ten years or so. But he really has put in a lot of public service with the county, and I'd just like to give him twenty or thirty seconds. You can all read the plaque and what's there, and I'm not going to take your time up reading that out. Jim, you want to say a word or two?
Okay, thank you, Evan. I have a reputation of running short meetings and I'm sympathetic with you about the lengthy agenda you have tonight. So I will keep it very short. First, I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Public Works that I've had the pleasure of serving with over the last thirty six years, the staff of the Public Works Organization and the Water Resources Department, who I've had the pleasure of working with for a long time, for the individuals who have served as liaisons to the Board of Public Works. I hope we've given you some insights. And then to each of you as the Board of Public Works of Washtenaw County, who've given me the opportunity for so many years of public service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm smiling.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Maria Militar and Mexicans on Michigan for receiving the Hometown Health Hero Award from the Michigan Public Health Week partnership. And just to say, are you here? Yeah, I think you're coming up. Maria Militar and Mexicans on Michigan have advocated for resources to ensure that the Latinx. Oh, I'm sorry, Jimena, were you going to read it? Okay. To ensure that the Latinx community in Washtenaw County had access to COVID nineteen vaccination, COVID nineteen home test kits and personal protective equipment. And they are continually partnered with the Washtenaw County Health Department to translate critical information and create materials in Spanish. And to have Spanish interpreters present in the community clinics and manufactured home communities, restaurants, and places of worship in the areas most impacted by COVID nineteen. In addition to their usual programs and services to support the Latinx community in Washtenaw County. Maria Militar and Mexicans on Michigan have created an extensive network of volunteers to contribute to the COVID nineteen response efforts. And those efforts have resulted in over three thousand Latinx and Spanish speaking community members of Washtenaw County receiving at least one dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine through jointly hosted community vaccination clinics. And there's no disparity in first dose vaccination rates among those community members in Washtenaw County. And Maria Militar and Mexicans on Michigan have worked with the Washtenaw County Health Department to distribute over six thousand five hundred K ninety five masks. And one thousand five hundred over the counter COVID nineteen tests to Latinx and Spanish speaking community members in Washtenaw County in early twenty twenty two during Omicron surge. And at their twenty, April twenty two, twenty twenty two meeting, the Washtenaw County Board of Health honored, appreciated and congratulated Maria Militar and Mexicans on Michigan for their service and receiving the twenty twenty two Hometown Health Hero Award. And tonight we are doing the same. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for this recognition. I need to be completely transparent about who does the work and does the heavy lifting of putting the Latinx community in front of you, their needs, their challenges, their struggles. There's a group of people, the leadership in Mexicans in Michigan, who should be here in front of me, but I have the privilege of finishing my working hours earlier today, and they didn't. So they are the ones who should be here receiving this recognition and being right here in this specific precious place where perhaps hopefully in the future they'll have the opportunity to be.
Good evening, Commissioners. Maria wanted me to share who she's speaking about was so important, part of the team of Mexicans in Michigan who couldn't be here today. They include Nayeli, Nena Martinez, Ana Trinidad, Arturo Cabrera, Consuelo Alvarez, Sonia Hernandez, Ellen Ward, and Adriana Salazar.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Washtenaw County Environmental Health Program Administrator Jaclyn Bates for receiving the Samuel M. Stevenson Sanitarian of the Year Award. She's not here. She's on Zoom. Okay. Ms. Bates, the Washtenaw County Environmental Health Program Administrator, was honored with the Samuel M. Stevenson Sanitarium of the Year Award at the Michigan Environmental Health Association's seventy sixth annual education conference on March twenty three, twenty twenty two. Thank you. I'm glad we can see you now. The Samuel M. Stevenson Sanitarium of the Year Award is presented to recognize outstanding service to the Michigan Environmental Health Association and the environmental health profession within the last three years. Jaclyn Bates was promoted from Sanitarium to Program Administrator in late twenty nineteen after learning multiple environmental health programs. She quickly pivoted to support COVID nineteen response work after just a few short months in her new Program Administrator role, including answering calls from the public, facilitating emergency environmental health response to homeowners who were left without water and families failing septic systems and putting new processes into place to continue to assist customers safely when stay home orders were in place and supporting mass vaccination clinics. Jaclyn Bates championed a massive software change for the Environmental Health Division, which included participating in countless planning meetings, performing beta testing and training staff. And she has learned the technicalities of the court system, working with lawyers for noncompliance sites and facilitating environmental health appeals through the Board of Health. So it is therefore proclaimed that the, I'm sorry, that was, so we are very grateful to your service, Ms. Bates, and we are congratulating you here tonight. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for the recognition. I would like to thank my manager and coworkers who nominated me. I give all credit to the great team that I work with and the very supportive department that I work for. Thank you very much again, and I promise that I'll keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Corporation Council is now going to introduce our new Assistant Corporation Counsel. Well, if I didn't have my mask on, you would see a huge smile on my face right now because this position has been vacant for eight hundred and five days. So excited you're here. I'm thrilled to be able to introduce Michael Otten as our new Assistant Corporation Counsel. He is coming to us from the city of Detroit, doing litigation for the city. So he's been doing that for about five years. He is a local, he's a U of M grad undergrad. He went to Texas Tech for law school. And he is now a Washtenaw County resident in Commissioner Hodges' district. And him and his family, who he is with tonight, they operate a small farm as well. So in addition to being a lawyer, you're also a farmer. So I just wanted you to be able to say hi to him tonight and introduce him because I'm so thrilled he's finally here.
Thank you. It's a privilege and an honor to have been, to get this position. This is a dream come true for me. I've said it time and time again, I wasn't looking for a job, but when this one popped up, I could not pass it up. So it's an honor to be before you tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next, oh, Commissioner LaBar.
Chair, well, I was going to offer, you wanted to introduce his family, but but we, yeah, congrats.
Bedtime. Next, we are, we are going to take again another item out of order, a resolution adopting policy recommendations to save lives by interrupting violence. And I believe Derek Jackson is going to give the presentation. There you are. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I would ask the folks who are in the audience who are here to present with me to please come up to.
Derek, just hang on one second, please. We're, we have to adjust the volume. We're almost there.
I can also adjust it on my end if that helps at all.
We're good. Thank you.
So if I can ask the people who are going to present with me in the room to please join us at the podium. I just wanted to say that I woke up this morning feeling very ill, otherwise I'd be in the room. But this conversation was so important that we don't really have time to waste, and there was no way we were going to not have the discussion today. So we will be brief, but as Mayor Richardson said, the a young person was murdered today. So that if nothing else, should just speak to the urgency of the conversation we're going to have. Commissioner Richardson, you said it best. It's not about me. It's not about us and the commissioners or about the sheriff's office. Although many people see me and think I just am representing the sheriff's office all the time, which I love to do. But this work, I was fortunate enough to just help facilitate an amazing community group. And so with that, I will be quiet and I will turn it over to Charles Peterson Bay and Florence Roberson. And the people you will see standing behind them are community members who have in some way or another been impacted by violence and are here just to show solidarity. Charles?
How y'all doing? This is, man, I never thought I'd be doing this. My name is Charles Peterson Bay. I'm here behalf of the mayor's office and Derek. About a year ago, we all got together because of the violence that was going on in the neighborhoods. And I came by way of Supreme Felons. To give you all the brief significance of Supreme Felons. We basically was a group of guys that was in prison. And we came home, we decided that, hey, we ain't no war heroes. We, our problems out here, these things out here that's going out here, we helped create these things. So right now, since we've been home, we've been out here dealing with this, these young people, young brothers. We don't call them troublemaker, knuckleheads, none of that. They just uneducated and unloved. And it's a lot of violence. We don't have to sell this thing. I know we don't have, this is something that don't have to be sold. We all know that the community is bleeding right now. We got mothers that's losing their children right now. We lost one today. So Supreme Felons, our job is basically we are the bridge between the law enforcement and the community. The law enforcement respect us through this sheriff's department because of the work we've been doing in the community. The community respect us because since we've been home, the things we're doing in the community, you know what I'm saying? So we are that bridge. All we asking for us to support, to push this so we can do something about these youth in the in the community, and we need support. That's all we looking for. We're not looking for nothing but the support. And the youth need, we need to educate them. They need mental health. You know, a lot of things, a lot of stuff that's underlying things that's going on out here that that's not being spoke of, that we all know. And this is the result of it right here, you know? And and as a, as a, as an ex felon, Supreme felon, I can't sleep with it because I realized that I was the one that wanted to help create this when I was that young. So the best way to reach them is the ones that have been that route. We know what they're going through. We know what it take to get on the block and hold a pistol. We know what mentality you have to go through these things so that we know we are the community's mechanics. So I'm gonna leave y'all with that. I'm gonna leave it brief. Thank y'all. Flo?
My name is Florence Roberson. I am the program coordinator for Sure Moms. I want to just give you some stats. I have five mothers whose houses between them have been shot up sixteen times. I have five mothers who buried their sons. I thought one of the worst things in the world for me would be watching or standing near a mom who lost her son. It is a cry that you hear that you never unhear. This I thought was the worst thing, but the worst cry that I've ever heard was a mom who calls me and say, Florence, my son is going to get killed. Florence, my son is about to die because he's out there with guns. And there's no help for him. I thought the cry of a mother's wailing at a casket was something. No, the cry of a mother who says to me, I know my son's doing wrong. I know my son is going to die on the streets. I need help. So when we can sit around and come to a place, well, we've got to decide that we've got to do prevention work. We've got to get these boys before they die. We've got to get the guns off the street. Because I'll tell you, and I'll leave you with this, there's nothing worse than a mother or grandmother's cry due to the death or knowing that one day it will be her son or grandson.
So as you can see, thank you, Charles Florence, and for everyone who was there, I will be brief with just a couple of slides. I don't really need to say much more than that. The recommendations in the report speak for themselves. But the power of the group, the Community Violence Intervention Team that Mayor Richardson originally called together, is what you see before you today. Of community members, elected leaders, folks who have perpetuated violence in the past, and people who have survived. Of community members, elected leaders, folks who have perpetuated violence in the past, and people who have survived violence, all coming together to learn, to teach each other, and to develop the fourteen recommendations that you see before you. Just really quick, I just want to offer three quick statistics. Exposure to firearm violence approximately doubles the probability that a youth will commit violence within two years. So the idea that a young person who's in close proximity to violence in Washtenaw County within two years is either a victim a second time or potentially perpetrator the second time. This one really stands out to me, and I think it says a lot, and we see it in our everyday work. Hospitalization for violence-related injuries is recurrent, which means hospital readmission rates for subsequent assaults. So someone's physically seriously assaulted, guns, stabbing, is as high as forty-four percent, meaning that young person can come back. This is a staggering one. Homicide is highest twenty percent. What that tells us is if a young person goes into the hospital for gun violence, we know, and we can predict the probability and likelihood that they will want deceased or arrested at a future date. And if you ask yourself the question, what percentage of shootings in Washtenaw County are retaliatory in nature? We are upwards of eighty-five percent. You put all three of those data points together, and what that tells you is violence in Washtenaw County is predictable, gun violence is predictable. And if it is predictable, that means it is preventable if we come together and do the right thing. I'm gonna slide through this and just say, here are the fourteen recommendations. This is the very first time that we are publicly talking about these recommendations, although we have spent many hours across the community having smaller conversations. So we thank the county board of commissioners for being our first official step. But we will be doing this all across Washtenaw County. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of quick ones. And the ones in orange are the things that you, through the resolution, are already doing. Number one, set a clear goal, commit to saving lives by stopping violence. It sounds like words, but when you make that a part of your primary existence and your goal, then you start to really think about funding in a different way. You start to think about the folks you hire in a different way. You start to really think differently about the nature of county business when stopping violence, gun violence in particular, is a focus area. Also in the resolution, number two, and, and everyone who's done this work around the world, and I will say that we've had experts who have been doing this work and been successful, come to our group and visit us. And they all talk about the very first thing you need to do is a problem analysis and an asset mapping. And I know in the resolution, you will are taking the step to ask the county administrator to do the research and potentially fund that work. Number three was really about creating a plan for engaging key people in places. And number four goes hand in hand with that, engaging those key people with empathy and accountability. Zach Foster said in public comment, this isn't about just law enforcement. It really is about both. There are enforcement things that have to happen. Anyone who's been successful at this work will tell you that. If someone shoots your child, there has to be accountability. There are guns on the street that are being shot. Yes, there has to be accountability. But as you heard in the comments from Florence and from Charles, there's so much more we can do before that young person ever picks up a gun. And then number nine, you are also doing this in the resolution, I'm sorry, you already done this through the ARPA dollars by setting aside funding for new stakeholders and strategies. And I want to stress this piece. And, and I guess in some strange way, me not being in the room and those community members who are on the streets really doing the work is really important because setting aside those fundings for new stakeholders and strategies isn't just about our government systems getting those resources. It's about getting the money in the hands of the Floruses, of the Charles, of the Marvins, of the Billies of the world, who know how to do this work. And I have to talk about number eleven, and then I promise we will wrap up. Number eleven, because every young person we've talked to has highlighted this. The science and the young people say that we need a safe space for our young people. And if you talk to the young people, like we just did another session last week, they told us, there's nothing for us to do. We need a community center in eastern Washtenaw County. And they've been saying that for years, and the moms, the flow works with, have been talking about that for years. Beyond just what the community is demanding and asking us to do, let's talk about the science. Any community that has solved and dealt with community violence that we've heard of and learned about and looked at the research, they have a safe physical space. So you have the science and the young people who are telling us, we have to do that. And I just want to stress this piece because I've been working with young people in this community for years. I hope we don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I've asked a, a recent, couple of recent meetings at local townships, how come we haven't gotten over the hump to actually build a community center? To me, this is such an important issue. It's not the magic wand, but I believe if we listen to our kids, they know exactly what they want and what they need. I wanted to share one of the slides. I'm gonna just go through these. They're in your presentation. These are just some of the points I was gonna highlight. But there's one slide in particular that I want to leave you with as we, sorry. So what you see before you on the screen are the list of people who have been murdered in Washtenaw County. I often talk about this book that I carry for the last fourteen years since I've been at the sheriff's office. Every young person or person have been killed by gun violence is in that book. And these names are represented on the screen. And there's a space up here. There was a new name to add today. We don't know all the details of what happened to that, but I want to leave you to sit with this as we open it up for any questions or anything that you would like to ask of us, because to me, this is really why we do this work and why we have no time to waste. Thank you. Any questions that we can ask briefly before we let everyone leave?
Hey, Mr. Jackson. Good evening. So I see your documentation, and it is very thorough, very thought out on this situation in which we have mothers and people in our community that are losing their children. There's names that I recognize, and there's also some of my family who have been the victim of gun violence. One of the things that I did back in last year is I asked the people who are here today, some of them, Mr. Billy Cole and a few others, to convene a, a group to talk about the violence. One of the things that we have to really respect, that is when people are released from prison, that they are people. They have lives. They have hearts. They have understanding of what goes on in the streets. It's not unfamiliar to me what goes on in the streets either. When I talk with them and we got the, talking about becoming a five oh one C three, and they did that. And they have been moving and finding funding since then. I think this body here has a, a opportunity to bring about a eastern county situation that gives our young men and young women a location to where they can feel safe. Talking with the grassroots groups, what the young men and women have right now are just studios where they go and they have the adults there to supervise them to make sure that they all stay safe. That's not enough. We have an opportunity to bring insight to the gifts that each one of these young men and women have within them by increasing the opportunities to, you know, pre-apprentice training, doing things that can lead them to a college education, to, to a career. Those type of things have been lost in our district, in our school district. So what I have seen and what I know works is not only the grassroots groups, but they are the frontline, but our businesses, our schools, organizations within the, the city and within the township will benefit from less violence. Therefore, not only is, is government, it has an opportunity to provide funding for a better community, so does our local businesses. I've seen that model work in San Francisco. It's working real well, and it's led by ex-convicts. Their integrity, their moral, their moral way of living has given them the respect of the local businesses, the local government, to the point to where the building that they were leasing for the safe space where the kids have a place to go has now been given four hundred thousand dollars from the city government to purchase the building because they would have been gentrified out if they didn't own the building. So we're looking at something that's stable and consistent and sustainable for the future for our children. I thank you for your expertise in this, Mr. Jackson, and, and all of these who came today. You know, my heart goes out to your families. It's not easy to hear this almost every week of someone being a victim of violence. So thank you for this opportunity and continue to do, do the work. And I believe that opportunity for this board is at hand. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Labar, and then Commissioner Sanders.
Thanks, Chair. Director Jackson, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your work. Thank you most especially though to the, to the community members, the mothers, the family members who, who are here today. I think sadly, the recommendations you propose are necessary, and, and that is a shame unto itself. But I, I, I think this model of developing it organically and in concert is, is, is to be emulated and celebrated. Director Jackson, the, the question I have is, can you expand just a little bit more on the discretionary nature of this funding? Because we talked at our, at our working session about some of those differences in terms of mandated services and, and, and others. Can you tell us just a little bit more on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And sorry, you know, as we try to rush through just for time's sake, I think this is a really big piece. The recommendations themselves are really meant, in the, in the report that we put the language specifically, for individuals to buy into certain recommendations, for community organizations to buy in, for neighborhoods, and for government entities. So these are not mandates by any stretch of the imagination. These literally are what they say, just recommendations. And if we could do some of these things, we might be able to have some significant impact. The other part I'll state to that is, there are things that we don't even know because they didn't come up in our group. So we're not pretending that our group has all the answers. What we tried to do was really put all of the information together into these recommendations to hopefully spur the conversation, because there are many more than are on our group who are out there doing the great work. So, so to your point, Commissioner, it is not mandated. It is discretionary. And we would hope that whether it's the county, a particular department at the county, or any other government entity or community organization, or individual for that matter, that as you look at these recommendations and read through the data, you have your own ideas of how to embrace one or all fourteen and put that into work.
For sake of time, respectfully, I'd say thank you to the community for coming to share this with us. I'm gonna pose my question to Mr. Jackson, if you don't mind. Derek, would you be okay sharing with us who some of your key public officials have been in terms of supporting these, your concerns and initiatives from the beginning? So who, who would you say were sort of your foundational supports to be able to make this presentation to us today?
So I, I know you asked me, I'd be interested in the group's thoughts on this as well, but I would just say that, you know, Mayor Richardson honestly called us together for the original conversation. And that's all it was, Commissioner Sanders. It was just a conversation because we were so devastated by three deaths of young people that happened in close proximity. And that conversation spun into what you see before you today. I know that Administrator Dill, Commissioner Sue Schink, and Commissioner Hodge, all three have been attending regularly. I also had some good conversations with Commissioner Jefferson. And so I think we also had City Council member Brian Jones Chan from Ypsilanti City, who comes, and then Jimmy Wilson, who's a township trustee. So those are the elected and appointed officials who've been coming to these conversations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodge?
I want to thank everybody for coming out and for your ongoing work on this. I mean, it's, so my fellow commissioners know, this has been a lot of work since August of last year. Administrator Dill and Chair Schink and I, and, and the group have been a part of working with this group week, on weekly meetings for two hours at a time. So when we look at these fourteen recommendations, they didn't come about lightly. I mean, this has been a significant amount of work, and the, the work of the community has been incredible on this. I mean, the, I think this group has been one of the most effective groups I've ever worked with in terms of the amount of effort that's put into it and the quality of the, the content that's come out of it. This is really needed, and I'm glad that the county, and I'm hopeful that we will pass it. But I'm glad that the county will be the, the standard bearer for this and lead the way with hopefully the local governments in our county joining us in this, in this effort here. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Beeman?
For the sake of time, I'll also keep it brief. I just want to thank you for, for your time, for your advocacy. Your voices really do matter, and the time you've put into this is, is just, I'm sorry, I'm getting old here. It's, it's just amazing. So thank you. Thank you so much, and I look forward to, to continuing this work.
Thank you. Since I'm chair, I get to go last. And thinking about what I want to say, I, I start crying, so I probably will say less than I'd like to say. But there's, there's really nothing more precious than our young people's lives. And it's been an incredible honor for me to, to have been able to work with you, and I plan to continue working with you to do whatever we can to protect our, our young people's lives. And I'm not a person who often says that I love you to people, but I will say I love you because you are working so hard to do something that is difficult and important. And you, this, this group, everybody in this group has, has worked together through difficult times, difficult spaces, talking about just, you know, incredibly difficult issues, always with respect, always with a focus on the goal, always with a focus on using data and research and information that comes from outside of our personal opinions to, to do the thing that we all agree needs to be done. And I'm just so incredibly grateful for your work. And I want to do whatever we can to support our young people, to support this work. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Sorry, I was gonna say thank you. No, I was just gonna say thank you. Just one last comment. I really want to stress how strong these mothers are, how amazing and caring and loving they are of their kids, and how smart and impactful these young people are. And so I know sometimes we think about gun violence and say, oh, those kids are trouble. It's much more than that. And you can look at Charles in the room, who we shared part of his story, and you can see the amazing men that they can grow up to be if we give them the opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Derek, for leading this work with, with such grace and intention and information. Okay, with that, to our liaison reports. Does anybody have any liaison reports? Okay, we're order of business. And Commissioner Labar is going to move that. Thank you.
I actually had just one brief liaison report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving too quickly.
But, but then I will. Our last CMH meeting was, was canceled. We did not have a quorum. And part of the reason for that related to the ability of somebody to attend the meeting in person. So I just wanted to flag that because there's, there are multiple reasons behind that, but it has been an issue. So heads up and, and please be aware on the CMH front.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? All right, now moving to special order of business. I'm looking for someone to move that. One at a time, and we will vote on each one separately.
Go move. Do you want me to? Under special order of business, item A, which is the public hearing to receive comment on the proposed brownfield for three eight seven four Research Park Drive. Now, that is for May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a second. Mr. McKay, can you please call the role?
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Item passed. Item passed.
Here for May then uh item two, which is a resolution setting a public meeting to receive comment from the Washtenaw Urban County twenty twenty-three action. Annual action plan for May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a second? Mr. Mulcahy. Oh, any discussion? Sorry. Mr. Mulcahy, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Schink.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Item passed.
And Chair, item three, resolution setting a public hearing for May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh this is regarding receiving public comment on the proposed twenty twenty-two millage rate.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Mulcahy, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Schink.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Next, we have appointments. No appointments. Uh with somebody who's so kind as to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Port.
Any discussion? Okay, we can uh. Vote on the consent agenda with a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any against, please say nay. Motion carries. Report of the treasurer. Do we have one of those tonight? No. Item nine, resolutions. Could somebody please move the first reading resolutions or?
Chair, uh move uh first reading starting with A, which is uh resolution to adopt the brownfield plan for three eight seven four Research Park Drive. Uh item B, which is a resolution to ratify the submission. Related to the National Fish and Wildlife Southeastern Mission Resilience Fund. And the uh green infrastructure and Ypsilanti Township from Water Resources Commissioners. C, which is approving the purchase and installation of recording system for Washtenaw County fourteen eight District Court. Uh D, which is a resolution authorizing the creation of a risk manager position from Corporation Council. I item E, which is a resolution reaffirming and adopting an updated deficit elimination plan for CMH for fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. F, which is a resolution approving non-structural adjustments to the twenty twenty-two general fund budget. G, which is a resolution setting the twenty twenty-two millage rate at six point eight three four three uh mills from finance.
Support.
Any discussion? Can we vote on items for the first reading on a voice wrote a voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against, please say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation on the Washtenaw County audit results from Stephen Bland CPA principal principal from Raven Robson. Sorry.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. Certainly appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to walk through a few of the financial highlights here. But I will jump to the bottom line first and just let you know this was a very clean audit, a very good process, and I'm happy to. Always share positive results. There are about two dozen reports that uh we actually have included in your packet. I'm only going to refer to a few quick highlights from. Three of those documents. Uh but if you have questions on anything else, I'll be happy to try to address those for you. The three documents that are most important from my perspective are the annual comprehensive financial report or ACFOR. Which is what's currently shown on the left side of the screen. That's the biggest document, almost two hundred fifty pages. And it really takes all of Washtenaw County's financial information and slices and dices it. A variety of different ways. You get to see the details on a fund by fund basis. You get to see aggregate rolled up information. You see um pension history on the funded status of your plans. You see ten years worth of data in statistical section. There's just a lot of a lot of great information in there. Probably no single person cares about all two hundred fifty pages. But whatever you're looking for, you'll find it in there. And just about all the separate standalone reports that I'm not going to go over today are incorporated. Into this larger document in one form or another. The second document, which is on the right-hand side of my screen that I want to draw your attention to. Is the single audit report. And this document. Has a couple of different important pieces of information for the County Board of Commissioners. The first is the auditor's results as it relates to our evaluation of the county's internal control. Our primary job on the ACFOR on the left side of the screen. Is to issue an opinion on whether the financial statements are fairly presented, meaning. Are the numbers that are contained in that report, all of which came from the county's management. Are those numbers reliable, something that you as elected officials can use to inform your decisions? And we've issued a clean, unmodified report on those financial statements. But as part of doing that, we have to look also at the system behind the numbers, the way Washtenaw County accounts for its operations. In order to uh in inform our overall audit process. And the single audit report gives us an opportunity to share with you the results of that side of the audit, not just the numbers, but the system behind them. And finally, that single audit report also addresses the results of our test of the county's compliance with all of the strings. That the feds like to attach whenever they provide grant resources. So the county uh received and expended a significant amount of grant money. That's true most years, but it's really been. On the rise with all of the one-time COVID-related relief that has been uh funneled through the federal government. And so there are a lot of different federal programs that get a very close look each year through the single audit process. And this is our opportunity to share the results of that as well. So that's kind of the quick overview. The third document is just the final um nickel and dime recommendations, and I'll get to that last. So in terms of highlights inside this two hundred fifty-page report, as I said, there's something in here for everyone. I'm going to go ahead and jump all the way down for those of you who are following um in detail to page fifty-two, which is where we show the results of the general fund budget. So I've got the table of contents on the left. I've got page fifty-two on the right. I just want to point out that the county had approved a general fund budget of about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars of revenue. At the beginning of the year or just before the year began, rather. Over the course of the year, that was amended up to a hundred twenty-eight million, and that's pretty much what was collected. On the expense side, the original budget called for spending up to ninety-five, almost ninety-six million dollars. That was ultimately amended up to allow expenditures up to a hundred and two million dollars. Actual costs came in under budget at about ninety-two million. So with revenues being uh on target and expenditures being under, the bottom line is. The general fund increased by about three million dollars. You had a budget that allowed for it to go down up to ten million. And so that three million dollars dropped into general fund balance. Your general fund balance is now at right around thirty-seven percent of annual operations, which is well in compliance. With your established policy and those resources are available for you to appropriate in future uh budgetary cycles as you go through that that process. We know these have been very atypical times for government finance. Uh there have been a lot of. Shifts in available revenue. There have been new revenues that have become available and a lot of difficult decisions on how to deploy those resources. So uh having some flexibility and the ability to make um well-reasoned and thoughtful decisions is certainly a positive. For the county all the way around. Switching over then to the single audit report, I'm going to also jump well ahead. The. The table of contents shows the part I'm going to take you to is page seventeen, and that's sort of the. Uh overall summary of how the audit process went, and it's all good news. Here on page seventeen, we indicate an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements with no. Um material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. Either in internal control over financial reporting or in the county's administration of federal grants. So it's always hard to point you to what's not there, but a page that says there were no financial statement findings and a page that says there were no federal award findings. That's pretty good news to be able to share. Just so you know, we were actually paying attention. We do give you one other letter. Where we bring to your attention any small things that come uh to our way over the course of the audit, and we have a few pages of boilerplate. We came down to only one very, very minor recommendation, and frankly, I'm I'm almost loathe to share it, except the state makes us. Uh we managed to find one bank reconciliation that was done accurately. It just wasn't done as early on the calendar as you would like. There were extenuating circumstances for that, and it ultimately did get done. It was just done after the the deadline the Michigan Department of Treasury has set. And honestly, that's all I've got for you. It was really that clean of a process. And the fact that uh management works so hard to account for your operations throughout the year, and that's. All we're able to find really speaks to the caliber of financial management you have at Washtenaw County. That was a lot of information really fast. I'm happy to give you more detail if there are areas you'd like to ask questions. Or I can just get out of your hair and let you get on with your business.
Thank you. I'm gonna check and see if any commissioners have questions. Commissioners. Nope. Thank you very much.
All right, we appreciate the opportunity to be of service.
Yes, thank you. Hope you have a good night. Um now, um Mr. Mulcahy, could you please um ask? Commissioner Jefferson about his votes for the three votes that he missed.
For special of order of business number one.
Yes.
Special order of business number two.
Yes.
Special order of business number three.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the single reading resolutions. If anyone's willing to. Thank you, Commissioner Labar.
Sure, we start with A, which is the uh proven approval of the creation of human services program aid to support barrier busters. Uh B uh is approving the creation of grant status ARPA weatherization program coordinator in O C E D. Uh that is time sensitive, I know. C, a resolution to approve substantial amendment to the twenty nineteen annual urban county action plan to include cares allocations. D, resolution to approve the budget amendment for Michigan State Housing Development Authority Rental Assistance Program. E, which is a resolution ratifying the signature of the county admin on the Michigan Enhancement Grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. F, which is a resolution. Authorizing the grant from the Bank of America Foundation uh to support the conviction integrity and expungement unit within prosecutor's office. Uh G, which is accepting the uh Michigan DHHS grant for county jails COVID-nineteen testing reimbursements. Uh for seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. H was a resolution approving uh. Washington County to be the custodian of the fund for the recycling quality improvement grant and application to action grant from Public Works. I, which is a resolution directing the Board of Public Works to uptake to undertake the North Lake Improvement Project in Dexter and Linden Townships. J, resolution directing Board of Public Works to undertake the lower Huron River Chain of Lakes Improvement Project for Dexter, Webster, Putnam, and Hamburg Townships. K, which is a resolution directing Board of Public Works undertake the Jocelyn Lake Improvement Project for the Township of Linden. L, which is a resolution authorizing county administrator to sign, accept, and amend the budget for the Michigan Department of. Environmental Great Lakes Energy Eagle twenty twenty-two scrap tire cleanup grant. M, which is a resolution authorizing the above midpoint hire of Michael Otten as Assistant Corp Counsel. N, which is a resolution ratifying electronic application for the. Michigan State Court Administrative Office for the twenty twenty-three Michigan drug drug court program. Uh O, which is a resolution approving the twenty twenty-two equalization report. P, a resolution approving the amended bylaws of the Community Action Board in the office in the office of O C E D. Q, a resolution amending the bylaws of the Washtenaw County Commission Aging. R, resolution adopting policy recommendations to save lives by interrupting violence. S, which is a resolution to support state action repealing Michigan's quote no-fault auto insurance reform twenty nineteen. T, which is a resolution calling the Michigan Legislature to support Michigan municipal and county clerks in their electoral responsibilities. U, proclamation of appreciation for Jim Dries for his service to Washtenaw County Board of Public Works. V, proclamation recognizing uh Maria Militzer. And Mexican nest in Michigan. For receiving the hometown health hero aw- award from the Michigan apartment. Excuse me, Michigan Public Health Week partnership. Uh W, proclamation recognizing Washtenaw County Environmental Health Program Jocelyn Bates for receiving the. Uh Stevenson Sanitation of the Year Award. Excuse me, Sanitarian of the Year Award. Uh X, which is a resolution proclaiming May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the May ninth through sixteenth. Uh week as Taiwanese-American Heritage Week and celebrating the twentieth anniversary of the Taiwanese-American Association. Y, which is resolution authorizing submission of the Damian Craft Meats Application to USDA Meat and poultry processing. Z, which is a resolution instructing the county administrator to develop a report on options for affordable housing on the vacant service parking lot. The corner of Anne and Main in Ann Arbor. Uh and then I would include. Under uh the supplemental. Uh and this is a first for me Corp Counsel. Uh item AA, two As. Uh resolution supporting two percent structural raise for members of ASME Local Thirty Fifty Two. Uh and the creation of the uh accretion issue. And then what I will dub AB, which is the uh I believe uh the abortion rights. Resolution uh that we were provided with, and I think that I think that concludes the. Items, Chair.
Port. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items for separate consideration? Commissioner Scott.
Yes, I'd like to pull item AA.
Okay, any other items? Okay, um as part of this um. So I guess I'll ask if there's any discussion, but say before we move on to discussion. That is part of this batch of resolutions which was made longer because of. The cancellation of our last meeting due to a serious security concern. Ramon Patel is going to give us um an equalization report. And so I'd like to start with that report and then move on to to further discussion. Welcome and thank you.
Madam Chair. And members of the board. Today, I'm proud to present for your review. Washtenaw County sixty-fourth annual equalization report. Which will be my fifty-first. And final equalization report of my professional career. I'm grateful for the opportunity that Washtenaw County has given me. As an immigrant from India. My very first professional job in America was with the Washtenaw County. I have poured my whole life into service to this county. And I hope that I have been trustworthy administrator. In the uniform and equitable equalization of the property value. Although it is tied to revenue. The goal of assessing and equalization is not to generate the more or fewer tax dollar. Instead, it is intended for accurately. Measure market value using using the uniformity and equity in assessment. This is our statutory responsibility. Our duty is to fairness extend beyond the Washtenaw County government. And to the other taxing units in receiving the exactly their fair share in a tax dollar. By means of the appointment report, which will be presented in November. I urge our county. Not to lose sight of this guiding principle of equalization. A county that neglects the equalization will sacrifice the thorough and uniform measurement of the property value. And thereby restricts its own tax base. Furthermore, an equalization department that allows itself to be influenced by other pressure. Will go against its all lawful responsibility. I would like to thank our present and past commissioners. Administrators, county tractors, county clerk. Supervisors, assessors. Board review members and associates in equalization office for their support. Now, I'm I'm gonna present to you my recommendation for the twenty-two equalization. Now, before I present to you equalization report, the report which you have in front of you. Is a condensed version of the report that has only total. Actually, equalization report. It goes to the state. It is a hundred and twenty-one pages in it. There's hundred and twenty-one pages is nothing but the calculations. By city by city, by township by township, by classification of the property. So just let you know, this is the official copy. I will be sending to the county clerk's office for the record. And this happens for every year. Since department started sixty-four years, I'm the second equalization director. And this is the process and procedure we always have used in our county. But if you like to see more detailed work. But if you like to see more detailed work, nothing but the data is always available in my office. So, let me start with my recommendation to you. I'm recommending agriculture property be set at the 569 million, which is going to be increase of 2.89%. Now, there's a difference between equalized value and taxable value. Board of Commissioner has a right to only equalize value. You don't, there is no equalization involved in a taxable value. Taxable value is merely a calculation, and that calculation goes directly to the local assessor and state. And that calculation may use for the headly fraction and all other things, but there is no approval required for the taxable value by the board, okay? Second recommendation is a commercial value. I'm recommending 5.5 billion, which is 4.79% increase. Industrial, I'm recommending 612 million, which is a 5.22% increase. Residential, which has a highest percentage in our county, it is 18 billion. That increase about 762 million, 4.41% increase. Developmental is a transfer of the classes, so it has a loss on 7.22. And personal property, we are recommending 1.2 billion this year is a 17 billion increase of 1.4%. So, total county equalized value, I'm not talking of the state equalized value, I'm not talking the assessed value. This is the county equalized value. I'm recommending 26 billion, 37 million, 710,000, 199, which is increase of 4.31%. This is our county equalized value. 64 years ago, we started with 1.5 million. Today, we have a 26 billion, and that's been between the two directors so far in 64 years. 26 billion is 52 billion in market value in our county. That is our county valuation. That does not include exempt property. This is only adware on tax. This is not the special tax, adware on tax only. And a special tax means there is no I F T, C F T, and all those included in it. And this is our responsibility as a board commissioner and equalization director to equalize the county. This report goes to state, and they're going to check this one, then it becomes the state equalized value. If there is a problem, then it's come back to the county board of commissioner, then county board of commissioner and equalization director decides what to do about it. And let me share some history on the past. It has happened in our county. We have gone to the tribunal, we have gone to the Court of Appeal, we have gone to the Michigan Supreme Court. It has taken the three years to resolve the problem on equalization. I see that sometime you've got 10 minutes to do the equalization. I have seen equalization, board of commissioner has to come back for three continuous day to resolve the equalization. I'm just giving the, because it's the last year for me, I'm giving you some, that history behind it. Because right now, everything is working so good in our county with the local unit of government and us. So, we are coordinating everything, so there is no dispute in the valuation. Otherwise, that could be dispute between assessed value, total assessed value, and total county equalized value. That could be dispute between the county equalized value and state equalized value. This is the checks and balance system. Okay, so, let's move on to the second slide. This is the 10 years of history. You can see that our equalized value is going down little bit in the 2022, 4.3%. In the 21, it was 4.47, and before that, 6.53. Now, I expect that you're going to see some impact in the future year too. But that doesn't mean that your taxable value is going to go down. Those are the two different process and procedures. But our responsibility is only the county equalized value, okay? Now, next slide is our new construction. You can see that our new construction has gone up 561 million this year, and that is the 50% of the market value. If you double that, that is the market value. So, you see it from 21 to 22 has gone up quite a bit on new construction in our county. Next slide is the percentage of the county total. Now, you see that right now is a 68.98%, 69% of the properties are the residential property. Every year, it increases. And the rest of the percentage are right there on the slide, you can see that. Now, look at the next slide. Average residential sales price. Now, look at the 10 years ago. 10 years, 175,072 and 178,998. Look at that today, 430,000, and average sales price in 10 years is more than double. That is our county. In 10 years, it doubled the prices. Now, this ends the equalization. Now, the rest of the information I have, because I have a label here, and also, it has labeled over that it's a tenity. Because this taxable value can always change, it depends on what happens to the state level, okay? So, that's why I have labeled the taxable value. Also, I get so many telephone calls because there are almost 78 unit of government, they like to see their taxable value and equalized value, including our county. They are no different than other unit of government. They get the same telephone, we get the same telephone calls. So, I'm trying to help everybody as much as I can so they can start preparing the budget. Our county has to upgrade, update their budget. They don't have to start preparing the budget, but the rest of the unit of government, all our schools, all Indian major school district, they all are looking for this information. And you will see tonight, it will go on our website, and they all will be collecting, and some of them may be watching tonight too. The next slide, you see the taxable value. Now, you notice that our equalized value went up 4.3%, and our taxable value went up 5.80%. And sometime people are going to be asked the question, why that happen? It generally is lower than equalized value, isn't it? But we got the higher new construction this year. Okay, we got a lot of uncapping, that's why you see the reduction in our mileage rate. So, we are benefiting because of the higher taxable value. Plus, also, same time, we are reducing the 2.5 cents on our general fund villages too for the county. Not even the county, but there are a lot of schools, and everybody have a reduction in the mileage rate, okay? The next slide is the board review action. We have over 1,000 texts per appear in front of the board of review. 762 application being granted, we reduce our assessed value by 78 million. We reduce the taxable value by 58 million, this is the county Y. Poverty exemption, 462 texts were applied for it. Poverty exemption granted, 455. Disable veterans exemption also 383, and has been reduced taxable value by 42 million dollars. Now, next slide, you see that, and the left-hand side is equalized value. Again, it's the county equalized value, and right-hand side is a taxable value. You can see the township by township and city by city, we have to distribute this to them. And tonight, they're going to see all this figure. Generally, in the last 64 years, we do not release any figure unless until it is approved by this board. That is the rule. Okay, so, because you have, because you can change anytime the county equalized value. You have right to do that, or any city township comes in front of you, which has a legitimate request or anything like that, you can reduce and increase the equalized value. And that has happened in the past. That's why we do not release any information unless until it is approved by the board. Okay? And I hope it does not happen in the future too. Make sure that board commissioner requests for everybody not to release any information until it is approved by the board. Because you're going to have a mess in this county if you do that. Because you can see the data, how much data goes through. This year, total levy in this county, the first time, is going to be $1 billion. Now, if you wanted to have a smooth transition and smooth run out in this county, you have to be very, very strict about it. Otherwise, you've got to start all over again. So, I'm going to show you further slides on this one, how important it is that you have to do by statutory deadline, everything, okay? Now, the following slide, you show all the schools. All around 19 schools, they wanted to prepare their budget. So, they just go ahead and prepare the budget, getting the information from. There is a second report, which I have not brought in here, is the headly reduction fraction. Each and every governmental unit have a different reduction fraction, just like county has. Same thing with the community colleges, same thing with the intermediate school district. You see all the villages, they have their own budget. All the authorities, all the libraries in our counties. These are the massive data, and has to be distributed properly. The next slide is I F T and C F T. I F T and C F T means that commercial facility tax and industrial facility tax. These are not the adware on value. Okay, these are the special value. So, we do collect on those valuation of the property tax. But this is on a top of the adware on property tax. Board of Commissioners are required to equalize the adware on property tax, not the special tax, okay? B N R property, there are some B N R property in our county, which has $11.1 million, and we collect that too. The next is a rehab property, we have only one property in Washington County, which is in Ypsilanti City, has a 1.4 million taxable value. And the next slide is C P I, Consumer Price Index. That's the definition, which you can read that later on. Now, here the C P I number, how the C P I number been calculated? Now, I expect this C P I number may go higher next year. From 1.33, probably more than 1.33, I don't know what the number is going to be. Because still, we have to wait for the few numbers before we can say next year. And if the C P I number increases, there are chances that taxable value may increase too. And you see that difference this year, I mean taxable value, because of the higher C P I number. Last year was only 2 point something, this year is 3.3. Also, I want you to remember one thing. That C P I number, according to the constitution, never going to be higher than 5%. So, if the C P I number is 9%, don't expect that we're going to have a windfall here. Everybody has to cut down at the 5%. That is in a constitution. So, no matter how higher C P I goes, property tax never going to be higher than 5%, all right? The next slide is the county slide. This is the way we have calculated the county reduction fraction. So, you can see that last year, we levy 4.37, now it's going to be 4.35. That is all related. Now, if you folks decided to, well, Ramon, we don't like 4.35, we wanted to go back to the 4.37. It used to be before proposal A, before 1994, you folks can raise the hand, and you can go back to the 4.37. Now, there are so many raises, hand been raised, now you have to go to the voters to have that. Okay, that is the only restriction they have put, and there are some other restriction. This is one of the restrictions they have put on a proposal A. So, if you wanted to go back and overwrite the headly or go, but it's not going to be alright, still is going to be new villages. Okay, so that is the requirement. Once you get the reduction fraction, that's it, that's the way the final number is going to be. Now, next slide is that you can see the history since 1959, that was our first equalization. My boss, George Cash, was the first director, and he's the one who equalized first with the 562 million dollars. That was first equalized value in our county. Now, today is the 26 billion dollars in Washington County. Okay? Next slide is just a graph, you can see that 64 years of history. This is the gap between S C V and a taxable value. You used to levy on taxable, we used to levy on equalized value and assessed value. Now, we levy on a taxable value, that is the difference. So, if you see the difference between those two, you see the 22.20% that the savings for the taxpayer in Washington County. Before 1964, we have to levy on equalized value. Now, we levy on a taxable value, so we all are saving our tax, about 22% tax savings on each and every household and commercial property in Washington County. Now, next slide, which I have shown here, is the county revenue. Generally, I have not shown here for each and every governmental unit, but this is the county revenue. You can see that we started last year with 19.1 billion. This year is 20.2, and we have to add all these other special tax in it. So, finally, you can see that this year, our county revenue has went up 5.12% this year. 5.12%, which is a $4.3 million new revenue coming in. On the top, also, you see one more slide on the bottom, it says that, in addition, the personal property reimbursement summary report will be filed with the state by May 31st. I had to file the report, which is a part of the equalization, which is the loss of the personal property, which you don't see here. But that's where we calculate all these losses, what we have in equalization report. I have to file that report to the state, and you will get close to $1 million this year. Maybe $1 million. So, total revenue, I expect this year is going to be around $5.3 million plus minus. That is our revenue this year. All clear? Now, next slide, which I showed, this is the last year's slide. And you see the last year, we levy in this county 955 million. And I expect that, that this year is going to be more than billion dollars in a property tax in this company. Okay? So, Madam Chair, only thing I can say to you, that we got $26 billion, S C V, $1 billion in the property tax, and 200 and some villages in Washington County. Board, county board of commissioner has hand over to me responsibility. In the past, I'm handing over back to you whatever I could done. That's all my report here, and if you have any question, I'll be glad to answer to you anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. You have been a trustworthy and honorable equalization department director for many, many years, since 60 years? It's incredible. I'm sorry, 51?
51.
51, it's incredible. Thank you so much. Fifty-one, it's incredible, thank you so much for your service, we appreciate your many years of doing this important work and appreciate your very comprehensive presentation tonight, and wish you the best in your future endeavors, does anybody have any questions? No, I think we don't, thank you again.
I really appreciate it, Madam Chair, I have assisted about ninety commissioners so far, and four county residents, three county clerk, and many, many assessor and supervisors. And thing is that everything works very smooth, if we have a trust between the local unit of government and a county. That is a must, you must have that, and leadership goes from, from your board. And we have maintained that in the past, and he has worked out really good, otherwise, we had our fight in the seventies and eighties. You don't wanna have a history repeated again, in my opinion. Uh, everybody wanted to do the good job, and another report that I wanted to share with you, that there's a state law requires, last three, four years, that every governmental unit in their assessing department has to meet the minimum requirement of the assessing. And I have to, I am proud to report to you, with the cooperation with the equalization staff and all those things, every governmental units in Washington County have passed that audit. So all the assessing function in Washington County is doing very well, so you don't have to worry about missing the value or anything like that. And it has worked very good in our county, if you compare our county with other county, we are the number one county in the state of Michigan. And I hope Madam Chair and members of board, you appoint somebody in the future such a way that have a continued legacy for everything, because it's gonna be billion dollar in a property tax revenue. That's all I can say to you. And thank you very much for everything what you've done for me.
Thank you. Thank you, okay, so now we're going back to the long list of resolutions that were moved and seconded. One was pulled, A A was pulled for separate consideration, is there any discussion on the other resolutions, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you Chair, I will keep my comments brief and orderly here, for efficiency. I did wanna comment on item E regarding the mental health deficit. I would like to see us, this is just maybe a note for county admin, I'd like to see us explore whether we can pay off this debt or free up these structural dollars with non-structural dollars, now that our budget is doing pretty well, and C M H's budget appears to be doing pretty well. Because we have structural dollars tied up in paying off the deficit in between of a couple million dollars a year, so. Something I'd like us to just take a look at, if that makes sense, certainly it might not make sense, tell me if I'm wrong. So I wanna make that note. The second is, we have the resolution approving a non-structural adjustment, I'd like to have some more discussion on that, find moving it through one through the first reading tonight, but it looks like we're putting non-structural dollars towards the compensation study. I'm very happy if we need to put more money toward the compensation study, but it seems like that would be something that would need structural dollars for ongoing cost. Again, noting it now, don't need to answer at this point, but something that I hope someone can follow up with me on, between now and the next meeting. Third comment on the creation of the barrier busters position, I'm extremely pleased to see this, and thank you very much to county admin and O C D and to Peter and working on this and whoever else worked on it. I think this is incredibly important, it's something I raised in December, and admin committed to bringing that back to us, and you have, and so I appreciate that and want to acknowledge that. The next item, I positioned for grant status, ARPA weatherization, I think that is phenomenal as well, that is a really important program. Weatherization is not always the most exciting thing in the world, but I think is so impactful because it it speaks to so many of our priorities at the county around the environment, equity and supporting lower income residents, so I think that is phenomenal as well. The, I think the last one here I have, excuse me, is the, the funds to support through C D B G to provide business for, business service and support for low to moderate income businesses, this sounds like a phenomenal item as well, and I would just want us to, I would just wanna learn more about that and figure out what we can do to highlight this and emphasize in the community afterwards, because I think this is a, an important thing to do to make sure that we're helping those businesses that perhaps were not assisted through our prior rounds of, of business funding, so. Those are all my thoughts, no questions or concerns, usually all pretty happy comments about the many, many items that are on our agenda tonight, so thanks to everyone for what I'm sure was a heck of a lot of work, thanks Chair.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay. We'll vote on those, and then we'll consider the item that was pulled for separate resolution, and this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Item's passed.
Thank you, next we'll consider A A, the supplemental, Commissioner Scott?
Thank you Chair, on this resolution, I just would like to make a motion to strike the last two sentences of the final, be it therefore resolved, so I'm moving to strike if no resolution regarding positions can be found. The county has asked me thirty fifty-two agree to enter binding arbitration regarding these positions exempt from this arbitration or previously agreed upon positions on in the union.
Any support? We can vote on the on the amendment.
Discussion and then vote.
Yes, first we have to discuss the amendment and then vote on the amendment, and then we can vote on the entire resolution, so this discussion is just around the amendment, and then, is there any discussion? Hey, we're ready for the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sanders?
So when you say only around the amendment, I, I just needed a, I had a question of clarity, because I don't assume that our residents understand, or would understand, what accretion means. I, I, I'd like some, just a definition for them to understand what that, what that's about.
Thank you.
I, I'm happy to discuss what accretion means. There are, if in the resolution language, you can see that what the thirty fifty-two was certified for who was bargained for in that union, and accretion just means that you look at positions that have been created and decide if they need to kind of accrete, I, I think very visually. So accrete into the union because those positions meet that definition, and so that's kind of a, a simple way of describing what accretion is.
Okay, so just for clarity, we don't have any information that indicates that that particular number of employees asked to be included.
I don't have a particular number at all in this resolution. I think the union has thought that there are positions that can be accreted into the union, which is why there's this final, be it therefore resolved, that we have a committee that looks at the appropriateness of any positions to be in the union or not. That based on the language in the thirty fifty-two contract as developed, who they were bargaining for in the nineteen seventies.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, then Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Amendment passed.
Thank you, now is there any discussion on the amendment as amended, or I'm sorry, it's getting like, on the resolution as amended? Okay, seeing no discussion, Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll on the resolution as amended?
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
amended item passed.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of claims, so. Commissioner Labar, did you move those, I can't remember anymore, it's been a while.
You know?
Okay.
I was twenty-eight deep. So I, I move approval of claims.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Item's passed.
Thank you, next we have a report from the county administrator on food insecurity map.
Thank you Chair, good evening Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening Commissioners, two items, they're both related, we'll try to be quick. I am pleased to introduce tonight to you a project that we have been working on with many of our community partners. It's called the Civic Innovation Project. And I'll, I'll read the definition, and it's kinda complicated. It is optimization of mixed mobility solutions towards improving fresh food access in Washington County underserved regions. And that's a fancy definition for leveraging drones and robots to connect food and our robust food network in Washington County with food insecure zones in our, in our community. There are six partners, I'm sorry, seven partners, the American Center for Mobility, Airspace, Airspace Link, excuse me. They operate drones, the University of Michigan, Aerotropolis, Food Gatherers, Kiwi Bots, that operates, that creates robots, and Washington County. I'm gonna pause for a second to see if Commissioner Hodge, who is the lead from the county on this project, has anything to add.
Just wanna say it's been a really exciting experience so far, drones are certainly not my specialty. But to figure out how we can go about tackling food insecurity while making use of aerial drones and then robots, the potential for us to be able to do that's been really exciting, so I've been very happy to be able to be part of this and to help bring in additional partners. Really appreciate Administrator Dell's work, and then Peter getting pulled in at the last minute, because there was a lot of, a lot of paperwork had to get done as we focused on trying to get this grant application in, I'm hopeful that we'll get through the phase one of the grant, which will be fifty thousand dollars. And then if we get to that, we will then go for the one million dollar grant to actually do the project. So stay tuned, I think it's really exciting stuff, and it would be a great tool for us to be able to get food into the areas of the county that need it most.
Thank you Commissioner, the other part of the, the report this evening is to formally introduce Camilla Coromani from our office. I know that you all have seen her, she has been with us since the middle of February. And I'm going to introduce her now, but I, I just need to say that since she joined us as a temp in February, she's been phenomenal. We have given her several projects, and she's done them with a, a high degree of quality. And I think what you'll observe tonight is more of that quality, so I, I won't belabor the point, I'll just turn it over to her and say that we are so grateful to have you as a part of the team.
Good evening Commissioners, it is a pleasure to meet you all, for those that I have not introduced myself to yet, my name is Kami. Camelia is my real name, but I go by Kami for short. Recently, I was working with Administrator Dell, and I put together a map of Washington County highlighting our opportunity index. I'll get it up right here for you. So as you can see here, here is a map of Washington County and our opportunity index, the red zones, ooh, sorry about that. Indicate the lower index. I have put together three distinguishable icons, you see the yellow icons here, if I can slowly zoom in. The yellow icons here, I wanted to put together as, I am so sorry. Anyways, the yellow icons that I have up here, these are all types of possible places where you could get fresh produce, meat or dairy. All farmers markets included, I have the big chain grocery stores, Myers, Crocker, I also wanted to include it was important to me to include also the multicultural stores such as the Hispanic stores, Mediterranean stores, Asian stores, as well as the farmers markets, you know, we have Argus Farmer Shop, I even included the farmer's market that comes out here in Carytown. Because I think it's important to get produce during that time. I wanted it to also have farms, Wausau Fruit Farm right here located. I'm so sorry, this is lagging. But I do have Wausau Fruit Farm right here, you could get fresh produce, and another important aspect that I wanted to highlight on this map was, for example, I will show right here. Linden Township, as you see, there are no grocery stores, no religious worshiping centers, no community centers, so I wanted to add these red icons that border Washington County to show the possible food sources available outside of Linden Township. And I figured if I was doing Linden, I would just go around the entire border of Washington County. As you see, Pinkney has bushes, that's close to some people, potentially in Chelsea, Whitmore Lake, and also Ypsilanti. I wanted to emphasize the Belleville area, so some of our residents in Ypsilanti, if needed to, they could go to the possible food sources that we have available for them out there. Aside from that as well, we have hundred and thirty-eight of these yellow icons, so like I said, farms, grocery stores, local markets, farmers markets, and then nineteen red icons that border outside of the county. Next, I wanted to emphasize the community centers that we have, again, my apologies for the Zoom. As you can see, we don't have many community centers, the only community centers that we have are located in Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor. So, um, we have approximately twenty of them, they're in blue, they're kind of hidden behind everything else, but it's only in Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor. And lastly, as you can see, the purple icons, which there is a plethora of them, we have, these are the religious worshiping centers. So aside from all types of churches, Orthodox, Baptist, Catholic, you name it, I have it. I also wanted to include Baha'i centers, I wanted to include mosques, I wanted to include temples and synagogues and places that you could, anybody wanted to go worship to, they could, so I have, for example, right here. Like here, right here, this is a masjid, and then near that is another Baha'i center, Ypsilanti is heavily populated with churches all over, which I think is great, you know? And from the churches, we have, not just churches, my apologies, religious worshiping centers, we have a total of two hundred and thirteen, which I think is awesome. So in all, in all, in total, all of these icons that you see on this map right here, there's a total of three hundred and seventy-one, not counting the red icons that border, because they technically aren't a part of Washington County. And I think that overall, with what Administrator Dell is working on, I think this information right here on the map could be a great beneficial help. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hodge and the Commissioner Sanders?
Just wanna give a huge thank you to Kami for all the work that went into this, I, you know, I made the request that you make a map that had the grocery stores listed on it as part of what we were gonna include in the application for the project, and then in the same timeframe that you, that we thought, okay, we And then in the same timeframe that you, that we thought, okay, we're going to get a map that just has the grocery stores on it. We get this that has all these other really incredible data points that's, I'm sure made our application a lot stronger. But to overlay it over the opportunity index, include places of worship and everything else that went into it. Just phenomenal work and really grateful for the time that you put into it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'd love to have an opportunity for all of the Commissioners to receive a copy of that.
Absolutely.
Because I think that it would allow us to possibly add in some areas or locations that may not be included that we are aware of in our own districts.
Yes, absolutely. That was one of the challenges.
Good work.
Thank you. One of the challenging things about this map, actually, when I first started it, I thought I was finished after, you know, two days. And then, you know, I showed Diane and she was like, no, no, you're missing this, you're missing that. And I worked with Crystal Campbell and she actually got in touch with someone in the city of Ypsilanti. And the mayor provided me with all verified churches that are in the city of Ypsilanti, which I thought was a great beneficial help. And from there, I realized I was missing a lot. It was a lot of diligent work and diligent time. And I think I did get a good majority, but there is probably a few things missing. But I would love to send you all an Excel sheet and the actual map itself for you all to look at and to add and modify if needed to.
If I could just add to what Kami had said, Commissioner Sanders. What she will actually send you is the interactive map. So you'll be able to click on those icons and really drill down a lot better. We just have, you know, the technical issues presenting tonight, so.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, thanks, Scott.
Hi, I had just one question. When you look at the, the data, can you turn on and off some of the icons? So like, can you look at, for example, just the grocery stores? Because what I'm thinking about is where can you actually get food from? So I think the, like, the churches are helpful and I think some of them do provide food. And they have food pantries and things like that. But I also think about my district, a lot of folks in downtown Ann Arbor, great, you have everything. You have a lot of things, but an actual affordable grocery store is not necessarily one of them that's, that's walkable. You can go to the People's Food Co-op, which I love, but it's not exactly as cheap as, as Kroger or Myers or other places that I certainly choose to shop at more, more often because I need affordable food. But, and so that's one of the things I think was where can you actually get food from and where can you get kind of more affordable food from?
So one thing that I think is important about this map actually is I think a lot of people seem to kind of forget the multicultural stores that we have because a lot of these stores offer great produce for a very cheap price. And I think a lot of people could be intimidated at times to go to, for example, a Middle Eastern store to walk in because they might not think that they belong there. But all in all, if you walk in there, there, the produce that you need is there, the meat that you need is there, the dairy, whatever you want is there and it's sold at a much cheaper price. There's another, I think, local grocery stores as well, Zizi's Produce on Packard. It's a family owned store and it's small and it's local. So I think they sell it at a cheaper price as well. I think a lot of the times people tend to look at the more high end stores like Whole Foods or like you said, like the People's Food Co-op, for example, you know, those are also great places to get food. But, you know, within that area, if we look at the map, I'm sure there's a local Asian grocery store nearby that offer the same thing at a much cheaper price. So I think this map is a good resource for also our citizens to look at. And I also have the addresses listed down as well, so they could go at their leisure and get the.
That is really insightful. Thank you. Yeah, that's a really, really great point. And I want to be clear, I love the People's Food Co-op. It's just not, I could do all of my grocery shopping or I will be much poorer. So thank you very much. That is a really insightful point to look at these other types of stores that people might not think of to do some of their grocery shopping. So thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Beeman?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that went into this. One question I had, and I didn't see it because we kind of went east versus west, is are stores that aren't traditionally grocery stores included in the map? For example, in my district, we're more rural and it's not always wanted, but the Dollar General moves in and our Dollar Generals have expanded to have greater grocery sections, understanding that that's a need in our community. So were stores like that included or more just specific?
So the hardest parts for me actually were the rural sections. Because of that, I added the farms because I also added local bakeries that would sell fresh bread. You know, I would include all stores, even if, you know, I added berry farms. Would a berry farm have meat? No, probably not. But I think it's important to know to the public that you could get produce here if wanted. And they probably do have fresh dairy at the berry farms as well when you want to go in. Maybe, no. Like, would you want to check? I don't know, naming the ones I've been to. But like I was saying though, I did not include the Dollar General or anything like that. But I think that's what, what's best about this is for you to look at it and you could add. Because I know Andrew's also from Manchester. It's difficult to look through those areas. And I tried my hardest and my best, but I think that's what's best about the public, so they can also modify it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to circle back to Commissioner Morgan's question. Because part of the question I think was, are you able to toggle, Commissioner Morgan? You, you asked if you could toggle the different data points and it's in the same GIS platform that we've used for other things. So yes, you can toggle the, the data points. All those other, when you look at what we just saw, those locations are on there because that's what we were looking for, for the project. And thinking about where, like, drop off locations for the drones, for example. So you could easily turn some of those off. Awesome. Awesome job again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was really fascinating and important. And I'm excited to see those drones.
Yeah. So, so thank you, Commissioners. You've heard so much about this work. I was so pleased to see the end product and see it in real time. It's, it's very, very interactive and it gives us the ability to do much of what you guys are talking about. The last thing that I want to say is we often get questions about how are we really leveraging the opportunity index? Now, we can point to one of the ways that we're using the opportunity index to drive change in our community. And I'm really excited to see this from beginning to end where we take farm to table produce and move it to those areas that don't have grocery stores, et cetera, and use robots and drones to make that happen. Perhaps we're on the cusp of making food insecurity a thing of the past in Washtenaw County. So I just want to say thank you, Kami. Thank you so much for your work. We'll get this out to you and, and certainly take feedback on it, but I think it's an excellent tool for us to use. That concludes my report.
Next, there's a report of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I just want to say that I'm grateful that this meeting has gone as well as it has. Thank you, everybody, for your role in making it go so well. And that is all I have for that. Item 12, items for, sorry, current or future discussion? Commissioner LaBarre?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to say or ask apology from some of the department heads and office holders in terms of some of the confusion around the, the accretion issue these, these last few weeks. I, I, I feel like I personally, just from experience here at the board table, should have thought in a more analytical way about some of that. And just wanted that stated for the record. I know that they have, particularly our, our elected office holders, the hard, practical job of managing entities of, of county government along with the additional burden. You know, being responsive to the, to the public as an elected official. And conversely, you know, department heads have to make things work and, and don't have the leverage and authority frankly with, that elected officials do have. None of that was ill intended, but I, I just wanted to note that. And Chair, I appreciate your work these last few days, particularly in terms of getting us all rolling in the same direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LaBarre. I second what you just said. Any, anyone else? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank Commissioner LaBarre for moving a list of items that goes beyond the alphabet and doing it so well. That's all.
On the empty. Anyone else? Commissioner Beeman?
I just had a point of clarity. Did we vote on supplemental AB? Was that included? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Scott?
I, I'll say something about supplemental AB and, because it just went in with the, you know, ginormous list and we didn't pull it for separate consideration, recognizing it was a long night and not wanting to do a lot of talking about it. But I think it's an important resolution to signify where we stand as a county board of commissioners on Roe and what may happen in Michigan with, I, I like the way people refer to it as a zombie law because that's certainly what it is coming towards us. If the, when the leaked decision about Roe v. Wade comes out. And one of the things it does is authorize our chair to sign on to different amicus briefs that would be presented to try to help preserve the right for reproductive freedoms for, for women and people who need those services here in Michigan. I feel fully confident that as a county, we will continue to try to think creatively about what we can do to help women be able to still access these services. And I know that I, for one, and I believe probably everybody on this board is committed to making sure that we continue to help women no matter what happens with the Supreme Court decision coming in a few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. To follow up on what you said, I have been talking with Michael Steinberg of the ACLU and University of Michigan Law School about potential avenues for having an impact in this area. Some more to come. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Next then. Anything pending? No, nothing is pending. And.
I have a motion for you, Chair.
Do you? Well, Commissioner Scott, what would that motion be?
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support.